All right, so I have seven. So I'll call the meeting to order and maybe stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in justice for all.
And can I have an approval of the agenda for tonight?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have any editing discussion on it? Okay, all in favor of it?
I'm in abstain.
All right, so public input and announcements, and I do not have the list.
You have public if anybody wants to speak tonight. I think I saw Gail and Wendy on. Anybody online want to speak tonight? Okay.
All right.
We do love having people here even if you don't speak, so thank you folks.
So approval of the minutes from last meeting, so 9:20. Do you have a motion for the minute?
Sure.
Thank you, Lynn.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Cindy. Any discussion or edits?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Well, and I'm not quite sure. In the hybrid elementary meeting proposal paragraph, way down at the end, it says Len Doucet states that he agrees with the board members, but this will need to be figured out. I'm not sure what needs to be figured out.
I think that was when we were talking about, like, we had wrapped up the conversation and we were saying, maybe it was that you had stated previously, we need to figure this out. And we said, okay, well, we'll get a proposal, and we did figure it out, so maybe that's...
So I would just say that it says Len Doucet states that he agrees with the board members.
And leave it at that? Okay, yeah. And I think that was talking about, well, why are we here? Because we decided we needed to figure it out.
Right, right.
Okay. If you're comfortable just striking that and everybody else is.
Anything else on that? All right, all in favor? Unopposed? All right. Now on to sports update. I am moving this right along.
So I was here at the end of July, and we had just talked about getting into fall sports. I just want to give you an update on where we landed with numbers and percent-wise with student athletes, seven through 12, and give you a little bit of an update on the elementary numbers. So we ended up with about 110 and 48 fall student athletes. And with our current enrollment, it's about 39% participation rate, seven through 12. That's one of the highest numbers we've had since I've been here 10 years. That's, we're usually between 32 to 34, so 39 is one of the biggest numbers that we've seen, which is great. We have students doing multiple sports, cross-country and soccer. So it's really nice to see all of that. For the winter, it just opened last Monday, and we currently have 72 students who have registered. And we've added to that winter registration rock climbing club to try to support that club a little more with Zach Byrd and kind of encompassing that under athletics with them having to have a physical and all of that. So I'm actually going to be talking with the VPA about what that would look like to do it as a sport. Because I know there's some other states that do do that, so...
Because historically, that hasn't been a VPA-recognized sport.
It's just a club, yeah, that's now grown a lot. So right now, we have 24 students registered for rock climbing, which is awesome. So in years past, winter, our average is around, like, 110 students participating. So I'm interested to see how that looks. I don't know if you can remember from last year, we did add indoor track. And we're looking at about 15 students that'll probably be doing that, so it's 15 more student athletes participating. There's a name coming to the board tonight for wrestling, and so people are really excited about that for the winter season. So I'll have more numbers for you with percents once winter is underway. Probably at the January meeting when I come, I can give more of an update on that. Elementary, we have 3-4 boys and girls soccer and 5-6 boys and girls soccer. And we have about 84 student athletes in the district participating in that. And Mackenzie would be here. She's traveling with Castleton Soccer. She's one of the coaches for the girls soccer team. But she just wanted me to let you guys know that registration isn't open for elementary next week because cheer will be starting right off in November. And they will be looking for basketball coaches for the winter season. And we're hoping to have the four levels again like we did last year. We talked about bringing baseball and softball to the district, so that's a conversation we're still having and looking, it's looking like it might go in that direction, so we're really excited about that. We still have some more work that needs to be done outside to the fields, and that's hopefully going to get started this fall, so it'll be ready for the spring. We will be posting some middle school basketball positions, and it's all going to be dependent on how many numbers register. So last year, we had four teams with four coaches. This year, I'm pretty certain we'll have two teams for boys, but I'm not sure what we'll have for girls. And then, if you can remember, we just talked about, like, projected projects that athletics had going on over the summer into now. And we've, as you can see, the bleachers are there. Electrical work was done for the main scoreboard. Basketball hoops kind of were fixed that were not working. The new soccer goals are up for the whole district here and over at Clarendon. So just kind of the next thing to check off is we have some safety maintenance that needs to be done to all hoops within the building, so working with buildings and grounds on that. There's going to be open mat for wrestling for the district for students. And open gym for basketball has been going on throughout the fall. I think Liz is on. Liz, hi Liz. So we talked about last time the track that we're looking into. I chatted with Liz at the cross-country event we hosted down in Wallingford at Stone Metal Park. So we're going to try to get together to talk a little more about that and going forward. It's about a $2 million project, just to throw a number out there. We did have a gentleman come down and look at the facility over there, and his number was about $2 million. And that included, like, everything, work and track and all of that. So we... Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to chime in for folks to just frame that discussion a little further, that we are looking into, we will be looking into grant funding. There is congressionally designated spending dollars potentially available to us. So this is what we're going to pursue.
Yeah, and we have talked to one of our student athletes' parents who's part of the National Guard military. And they have offered, when we talked about this, a couple, five, six years ago, bringing in those military workers to do the work, and it would be part of their drill kind of thing. So she's all about that. So like, I talked to Liz. We're going to sit down and just kind of have a full discussion on what that would look like.
But I think good to note, and thank you for chiming in there, Liz, that this is not something we're talking about for budget season. This is just a special project on the side, and there's some funding that could be used for larger projects that not just support the school, but support the community. So this is a pretty specific project that we're trying to look at, and it might take a handful of years.
As you all know, we had money designated for the use for athletics for elementary and high school. So again, we still have work to the middle school field that need to be done for elementary to be able to come over and use those as well as our middle school teams. And then we will look at doing an upgrade inside the building, which is looking more so towards the middle school gym with those bleachers. If you've not been in there in a long time, they take about eight people to just even pull out, and they just stay out once they're out because they're not in great shape anymore. So that's something we're going to look into price-wise to see where we're at with the money that's left over. And then, last but not least, thank you to those board members that came out last weekend for homecoming. It was great to see the support for our athletes and our coaches. And I myself need to be better at kind of communicating to you guys when those things are happening, so you do know what's going on. But it was a great day, great weather, a lot of support, and there was a ton of people here. So it was nice to see all of that.
Thanks, Kim.
Kim, where are they going to train for indoor track?
So they train inside, in here.
That's what you're asking.
Yeah, I know. Do they just run around the gym, or what?
So they use the hallways.
Oh, okay.
And they use the weight room quite a bit. But yeah, the hallways. So we've had heat issues with outside for cross-country in the fall now. That's what they've done. We're lucky to have some doors that lock, so they can be in a confined area where they're not running around other things that are happening. So that's how they trained last year. They're actually looking at trying to get down to New York City for a meet down at the Nike track and field. So giving those students that opportunity to see a facility that Olympians train at and play. So it's a sport that's definitely growing, and it's one that we partner with MSJ. And they send over about three to four students, just like cross-country and track, that train with us, so...
Well, and the other thing I say is, the weekend was great. I mean, there was more stuff going on in this place than I've seen in a long, long time. So thank you for organizing all of that.
Takes a lot of, not just me, but a lot with the coaches and the student athletes and staff here, so...
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Have you, because we were talking, like, one of the reasons why we gave the money especially for elementary, have you heard positive things from community members, or at least less negative things about, like, the fact that we're offering these sports?
So I think, and you helped out last year with soccer, right? Yeah, did you help this year too?
No, Olivia didn't help this year.
Okay. Matt helped last year with soccer assistant coaching. So I think communication-wise with elementary A.D. has been a lot better out to coaches. She's actually coaching one of the 3-4 teams because we couldn't find a coach. So I think that communication. We also are playing schools within districts and then doing the rec program as well, so they're getting a kind of a double dip with more games to play. And that's what we'll look for for winter as well. And I think just having the fields lined over there this year, goals up in the middle of the field, really, like, there's three fields over there they can practice at. So I think having the facility ready, which took everybody helping and getting it on time for when they started, was one thing that those coaches from last year were really looking for. And we strive to tell them we were going to do that, and we were able to get that set up and lined throughout the year too, so it's not just a one job and done. We have the paint, which we're using money from that $80,000 to support. We bought a new paint liner that stays over at Clarendon, so we're not transporting the one here back and forth. So Mackenzie could probably speak more to the positivity on that. But from what I've seen, I think it's definitely better than it was in years past.
All right, thanks, Kim.
Thank you very much, Kim.
On to classroom size.
Feel free to scoot. Class size will be me. This is something, and I'll throw this up on the screen just so folks can see it. This was in the meeting materials packet for board members. So this is the same exact template that I shared with you last year, so just updated. And this is, I think, good timing because we've settled into the year reasonably. There's always enrollment fluctuation the first couple of weeks of school. You have some students that were signed up that don't show up, and you figure out they moved. And then you have some folks who come in the second week of school because they moved. So numbers tend to get a little more stable once we hit October. Actually, the state of Vermont looks at a window of time in October to set our average daily membership numbers. So we get our funding based on our enrollment numbers in October, which is a really interesting thing. You have to pick a time to set your enrollment. But if we see students leave in November, it doesn't affect our state funding. If we see kids join in November, it also doesn't affect our state funding. So I think these are always good numbers to be looking at, and it's good timing because we are starting our budget conversations. And we need to be thinking about, do we have enrollments that are coming down the line that we need to start thinking about adding teachers to keep pace with those enrollments? Or are we seeing declines where we need to be thinking about that in the other direction? So first up, I'll show you what the 23-24 enrollment is. And you'll see that at our elementary schools, that totals up to 422. You'll see that the projected enrollment totals up to 411. I'm going to explain a little bit where that projected number comes from. It's reasonably easy to say that our kindergarten students are likely to move on to first grade. So the first thing we do in creating these projected numbers is to move all our students up a grade level. And then we look at our pre-K numbers. It's a little hard this time of year to have solid projected pre-K numbers. Sarah Bolster does a great job of talking with towns and getting a read from them, just looking at birth records, things like that, to come up with numbers. In October, what I tend to do is I just use the pre-K group numbers. Hey, Doug, I use the pre-K numbers that we currently have. So you'll notice that those are the exact same numbers, pre-K 3 and pre-K 4. So if we're trying to predict the future, let's predict that we have the same-sized pre-K groups coming in. If that's the trend that we're seeing in our communities, either larger groups or smaller groups. If you do that, really then, you're looking at the difference between the pre-K 3 coming in and the 6th grade leaving. That's where your fluctuation happens. So if you have a large 6th grade and a small incoming pre-K class, you have a big negative fluctuation. If you have a small 6th grade class but a large pre-K group coming in, you have a positive fluctuation, if that makes sense. We've seen an interesting trend in the years where we saw a little bit of a bump. If you go back maybe two years pre-COVID, if you go back that far, we were starting to see a little bit of an elementary bump. At this point in time, that bump is like your 2nd, 3rd, 4th graders at this point in time. We haven't seen that bump sustained through COVID or after COVID. It may be that we're seeing a bump coming up with our pre-K groups this next year. If I were to guess, I would guess not. I would guess that we'll continue to have smaller numbers coming into pre-K. You can see that school by school, that's different. So Clarendon, you can see that our pre-K groups versus our 6th grade groups, we had larger enrollment in upper grades in Clarendon, and that makes a bigger change. Interestingly, you see Tinmouth, no change. Because if we have seven students leaving and eight coming in, you've got a tiny positive change that's going to round to zero. Tinmouth and Shrewsbury are a little more challenging because you can have greater fluctuations from grade to grade. So if you look at Clarendon, you'll see a little more continuity, 11, 13, 12, and then some bump years. But Tinmouth or Shrewsbury, you can easily go from, well, Tinmouth 4th grade's only got two students, but 5th grade's got 13 and 3rd grade's got 10. So you see more fluctuation in our smaller schools. At the high school, we do that same exact work. We bring our 6th graders up into 7th grade, and then our seniors are exited. So actually, there's not as much guesswork here because I'm not predicting my, like, my pre-K. I really don't know. I'm really making a guess. It's a more solid to bring my 6th graders up to 7th grade and then keep on going through high school. That's a 2% change if we follow those numbers out. So projected, predicted, if nobody leaves and nobody comes in, we've got a 2% decrease in enrollment. Last year, when we did this, we had a overall 1.5% decrease. We're projecting an overall 2.3% decrease. So when you take our elementary decrease and our high school decrease together, when you look at all the students overall, current enrollment 804, projected enrollment 785. And that's largely a function of graduating seniors, more graduating seniors than incoming pre-K students. You know, it's, we do see fluctuations where we lose students because high school choice or they move, things like that. It tends to be that the number of students we lose roughly equals the number of students we gain. So watching enrollment numbers, I mean, I've probably been doing the enrollment numbers in district for seven years now because I was in charge of state reporting before this role. And you really, you quickly see, first five weeks of school, 10 kids go out, 10 kids come in. Or it might be 11 go out, nine come in. They tend to be pretty similar numbers leaving and pretty similar numbers coming in. We did see a break in that pattern around COVID where a lot of students went to homeschool and a lot of students changed district. I think folks looked around and they said, let's compare notes on school schedules. And I want my kid to go to a school where they have more hours in person in the building. Because remember, in COVID, we were all coming back slowly, and we didn't all go to school five days a week necessarily. So I definitely want to point out that that pattern didn't hold through the COVID years. We saw some of those students come back. We saw some of the homeschool students come back as well. But I think that change of negative 2.3, negative 1.5 last year, I think we're going to continue to see that. I think we are. I think that's the statewide trend. I think that's the national trend too. If folks are having fewer kids and if we are struggling to have folks move into rural areas, you know, that number has a lot to do with new births in our towns. I think it has a lot more to do with new births in our towns than we lost a couple of students because they were frustrated with the district. Don't get me wrong, we lose students for those reasons. We do. We absolutely do. But we're not losing 2.3% of our students for those reasons. That percentage is because we have graduating seniors in classes that are larger than our incoming pre-K groups, if that makes sense. Looking at these numbers, we don't have a really strong reason to shift our staffing numbers by much. At our small schools, it's challenging because while we may have small numbers in some of those classes, some of those are combined classes. At Tinmouth, we don't have a 3rd grade teacher for two students. In some cases, we have three grade levels combined into that classroom. So Shrewsbury and Tinmouth, without losing 20 students, it's hard to advocate for losing a position at those small schools. Clarendon and Wallingford, at this point in time, we have one teacher per grade level at both of those schools. And it's, I think, hard, looking at these numbers, to say that we can get away with fewer. It would be really hard to combine classrooms at Clarendon or Wallingford. Last year, we did a lot of work on class size at the high school. And we compared regionally, we compared state level. And while we were not in incredible shape, I think we were not far off from state averages or our regional districts. The challenge with the high school is scheduling. The more teachers you have, the more classes you can offer, the more we're able to schedule students in what they actually want to meet their goals for after high school. If we dropped, let's say, three teachers at the high school, you might see averages that are still reasonable, but all of a sudden, you made it harder for a junior to take a class that they need to be able to take a class as a senior to be able to get to the college they're looking at getting into. So while the class sizes at the high school level are smaller, I still think our numbers are such that it doesn't support decreasing our personnel levels, not yet. I think we'd need to see another few years of the same kind of decline or one year of just a very different decline that breaks from the pattern. Okay, I just talked a heck of a lot. What questions do you have?
I just have a comment about it. Because the other problem with this is that, yeah, okay, we have 804, but that isn't the weighted average. So when it goes through the algorithm, that's a completely different number that we base our funding off of.
You know, and that's a really, really interesting thing too, Josh, because that legislation that was passed several years ago actually goes into effect now. We don't have 100% answer in how that's going to affect our district. What we shared with finance was that the projections from the state around our budget are somewhat favorable. So let me put that in more concrete terms. If we have 804 actual students, the state is going to wait those students, and they might say to us, we're going to give you funding for 820. That's somewhat favorable because that's a little more than we actually have here, so we get a little more funding for that. If we were a district where those waitings were not going to be favorable, the state might say, 104, okay, you're only getting funding for 104. That's it. That's all you get. So depending on that waiting, you're going to get more. And everything we've heard from the projections is we're in a somewhat favorable position. So I think that's another reason why, you know, cutting personnel doesn't make sense if we're in a somewhat favorable position. You know, we talked a lot last year about the history of the district, and I know I'm going into finance committee now, but we talked a lot about the history of the district and the last 10 years or so being a, working hard to get, to find places to eliminate, you know, to get rid of the fat so that we have a little leaner budget. And I don't think there are places to do that cutting anymore that won't really hurt. So I think another reason why cutting this year doesn't seem appropriate. If we're in a favorable position, then let's use that to our advantage and support our schools. But that's a good question, Josh. That number isn't exactly how we get funding for our students. And, you know, we still don't know 100% what that means. We haven't seen the final math on that. That will become very interesting come December when we see the yield number that sets our district tax rate. Then it'll become real. Until we get the yield in our district tax rate, who knows? There's a lot of conversation around amongst business managers where they say, okay, so maybe the weighting is going to change, but then if you shift the yield, you know, everything gets shifted somewhere, so is it really going to be that much different in the end? Because there are so many different places to make adjustments until we actually see our funding. Who knows? I, gosh, I wish it were a far simpler system. Other questions? Because again, there was a lot of me talking. I think if I were to summarize this, I'd say, small enough change that we're... I think if I were to summarize this, I'd say, small enough change that we're somewhat used to, and it doesn't have large implications for us as we build a budget. I feel a question coming, Len.
I was going to say, Len's got, thinking.
At one time, in the not-too-distant past, we were pushing to bring Ludlow, Malholy students to the district.
Yeah, we have a fair number of those students.
Do we? Okay, that's.
Actually, we, we had a really interesting year, you know. That stabilized us from some of the losses we saw through COVID. If we wouldn't have had, like, 30 students, 20 students, you know, that's a big swing.
Is that still what we're looking at?
Uh, you know, I don't know. I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
I don't know that it's fluctuated much since then, because our numbers really haven't, but I don't want to give you a number that's wrong.
No, that's fine.
I'll check.
Just at some point down the road, I, you know, because I remember us making a big push in terms of transportation and.
Yeah. And, and we did have a fair chunk of those students, and we went, ooh, thank goodness.
Yeah.
Because 20 students, 20, 25 students, 30 students is, is huge when you look at, what's, what's that percentage of 800?
And we got five out of the seven middle-tenors this year.
Yeah, which is awesome.
Which is all school choice kids.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is way up from years prior.
Yep. And I, and I guess that's kind of what I was looking for, is, is, you know, those kinds of numbers would be helpful.
Yeah.
That's all.
And then a lot of the, like in Tinmouth, a lot of the, the three-year-old pre-K, a bunch of those are not from district. So a lot of those are coming in from outside.
Universal pre-K.
Yeah. I assume that's, and all, all the schools have that, right? Or is it?
We, it's offered everywhere. Off the top of my head, I don't know how many students we have from that program everywhere, but I could share that with you, UPK students.
We do, we do have some at each place, much less in the village schools, because we have a procedure that says in-town first, then in-district, then outside, and we have long waiting lists for our village pre-Ks.
Well, I think that would be helpful for folks to see.
Yeah.
Because it does have an impact.
I can bring, I can bring an update next board meeting with, like, choice numbers, tuition numbers.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to get picky. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but it's just, I know we spent some time trying to push that.
I think it's also reasonable to, to, if our numbers are declining as kids are getting older and there is more space in some of the schools, like if there is more space in Clarendon, then expanding the pre-K program makes sense to fill in that space, because those, that money is not coming from the same place. Those kids are paying to be in the space.
Universal pre-K, yeah. Which, you know, and, and I wonder if that, I wonder if universal pre-K is going to shift in the future, because the legislature has also moved towards pre-K being offered in every public school. You know, that was, I think, part of the veto session in June, that, you know, Stan and I are talking about pre-K surveys, where they're asking, what kind of pre-K programs do you have? Because there are some schools who have none. So they need to get an idea of, wow, how many schools have programs that are in good shape and don't need anything? How many schools have nothing and need a lot of support? Because if that's something that's been legislated, and, and if every public school now has a pre-K, let's say, two years down the road, you know, does universal pre-K disappear? Maybe. But, interesting. We tend to have, and I'll get you more details, but we tend to have good numbers where we don't have a lot of students going out to have universal pre-K elsewhere. We have more students coming in, which is good. The funding on those students isn't nearly as much as, as a, as an elementary, yeah, school age or high school student, but it's, I mean, every bit helps. Good questions, good questions. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for letting me share all that. I know some of that can be dry and boring, but I think it, it supports the work that goes into budget, and it helps us have a more solid understanding of how do we approach that budget, so that we're not just going based on how we feel, but we're balancing how we feel with the, the numbers in front of us.
Brian.
Yeah, Liz?
Can I just add that this is not a unique situation to Mill River District? This is not just statewide, this is a nationwide issue, that people are moving to more urban areas.
Yeah. No, worth noting. Thank you, Liz.
Okay, on to special ed.
Coral. All right. So, time escapes me, but I want to say, gosh, a year and a half ago, maybe, I had done a, a presentation for the board regarding the status of special education monitoring, which is the name of the process by which public school districts are essentially surveilled by the state agency of education. And what public school districts are monitored or surveilled on is really related to, in a nutshell, our compliance with how we spend special education dollars. And the ways in which we are monitored on that are, are interesting and very, very cumbersome. And I, I won't bore you with the details, but what I will say is that when a school district is in a monitoring process, they are looking at everything from how well you comply with dates of different special education processes, like evaluations and IEPs. They are looking at your rate of compliance for how you serve children in mainstream classrooms or other types of programming. They're looking at your rate of compliance for how many preschoolers your district is serving on IEPs. They are looking at whether or not your numbers are aligned with ratios that are set by the state and federal government. There's actually 13 different indicators, and, and within each of those indicators are many, 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 many pieces of data. So the process is, is difficult. It's cumbersome. In the end, the monitoring process is really, I think, intended to help districts either improve or maintain compliance with federal regulations. So there, there are some, some positives that come out of it. I'm here tonight to actually report on the positives, which is, which is great. So a year and a half ago or so, when I last spoke with you all, our district, as well as three-quarters of the districts in the state of Vermont, had been placed on what they call targeted monitoring status. Targeted monitoring status really implies that there are certain deficiencies that need to be corrected. Although, when I did my presentation to you, we were actually placed on that list because there had been technical challenges with sending the state the data that they required, and so evidently, you get one shot and you're out. So if your spreadsheet shows up missing a number, you're done. And that is, I, I realize I sound like I'm joking, but in all seriousness, that is exactly what happened to us.
And this was a, this was a process that was new in the state.
Yes.
And I think the agency was still ironing out some kinks.
And I think they still are.
There were some technical difficulties that were not, that were common among districts where we uploaded scans and they were blank when the agency looked at them. And that was a, a problem with the system and how there was being access through the system, not a problem necessarily with what we were doing, so.
Yeah, and you can imagine.
There were definitely some growing pains there.
When you're uploading literally hundreds of pages to a, a website, you can imagine, you know, that certainly is not a perfect process. So, long story short, we had been placed on that targeted monitoring list along with three-quarters of the other public school districts in the state. So that means that for about a year and a half, we had pretty substantial reporting requirements that had to be met. I don't, at one point, Maggie and I were kind of keeping track of the number of hours that we had into it. It was a lot. That hard work, though, did end up paying off. We were notified, what, Brian, two-ish weeks ago, maybe? We were notified from the agency of Ed that we were, that we were compliant, that we had met our obligations relating to targeted monitoring. And the best news is we were informed that we have no further obligations until 24, 25. So we were really, really happy to, to hear that, and a lot of hard work to make that happen, especially from Maggie Aines and our secondary-level special educators here at Mill River. The reason I, I call them out specifically is because one of the areas that we needed to take a deeper dive related to transition plans. And those are part of an IEP that impacts children ages 16 years and up. So a really, really well-done, fine job by Maggie and, and the team here at, at Mill River. So I'm happy to answer questions, but.
And I'll, I'll throw one last thing in before you start asking questions. I do think it's, it's valuable that even though there were frustrations with the process, our team said, well, great, let's look at what they, let's look at what we did get to them, and let's look at the feedback they did give us, and let's try and improve our process. So we didn't just throw the thing out and say, oh, they don't know what they're doing. We took the feedback that they gave us and we, we worked with it to try and improve how we serve those students. Questions for Coral?
Coral, you, if I may, you came to us a month or so ago.
Yeah.
With concerns about having personnel.
Yeah.
To, to do things.
Yeah.
Where are we there?
Oh, Len.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No. And an appropriate question, because you just heard that the special ed teams were doing a lot of extra work with this monitoring. Yep.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not going to pull any punches, Len. We're making it work the best we can.
And that's all, you know, I'm not looking to point fingers anywhere, but I just know you came to us and, and were concerned, and we, as a board, need to respond to those concerns.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we are doing the very best that we can. We're, we're about a month into school, and I, I certainly can identify areas where we're having trouble keeping up, and I can, I can identify areas where we're doing really well, and I think that's just that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
All I wanted to hear, that we're keeping our head above water.
Yes.
And, and I think not, not something that is only a problem in special education. I think we're, we're starting to see, and I think I told the board near the start of this year, you know, our neighbor districts are hiring lots of people, and it's hard to hire lots of people. We were really lucky that we had fewer people to try to hire, but I would say that we are feeling staffing challenges far more painfully than we did last year even, just last year. I mean, we have a lot of places who, and the way we're staffed, you know, we were just looking at those class numbers, the way we're staffed, we don't, we don't have two elementary classrooms where, you know, we could combine those if we had to, so if we can't hire a teacher, we don't have that flexibility. We're, we're running pretty much at the staffing level we need, so when we lose a person in a department, that department feels it everywhere. I think, I think all of our schools feel that a little bit this year, and that's a tough way to start the year. That's hard. And I appreciate you, Len, saying, you know, the board needs to know that so we can support. I think our struggle is, we don't know how to support that. You know, when, when there's not enough staffing to go around, we can, we can do everything we can, but at the end of the day, if there's not enough staffing, there's not enough staffing.
And, and I appreciate how hard people are working, and I understand that completely. It's up to us. Part of it comes on our lap to, you know, what can we do? How can we help you? And I, and I think, you know, I'm not concerned about you not doing your job at all.
Well, yeah. I, I mean, we are, you know.
Well, I, I understand.
We have expectations of ourselves, yeah.
But my point is, we need to be able to help you.
And we wish we knew. We wish we had.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now. Yeah, if we could say to the board, oh, yeah, do this.
Yeah.
You know, staff negotiations, there might be some conversations around that, you know, looking at regional compensation, and are we, you know, are we an attractive district to work for? I think we've worked hard on the, on the cultural piece and, and trying to support our staff so they stay. And when good staffs stay, they bring their friends, too. But I think, you know, there's some work we can, and work that absolutely lines up with our board goal, to support staff through negotiations, you know. So that could be a place we find some things, you know.
So all I can think about is the conversation via email that Coral and I had in regards to losing one person, and how everybody got bobbled around. I think that needs to be looked at. So when we bobble, we can bobble easily, easier than what we had to then.
Yeah.
Because of people not being certified for, you know, K through 12, and I think that needs to be seriously looked at, so that it's a little less stress if something like that happens.
Yeah, no, that's a good, good thought.
For sure. Yeah. Certainly things to think about for the future, yeah.
Thank you, Coral.
Sure.
All right, so we're on to committee reports. So personnel.
Yeah. We met this evening at 6:30, so I have a couple of things here. First is, I would make a motion to offer Jordan McClure a contract as a special education par educator, 1.0 full-time equivalency. I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor? Pose. Thank you. Next is a contract for Ed Hasenore, as a long-term substitute for the 23-24 school year in science, 0.5 full-time equivalency, and I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Pose. Okay, thank you. Next is a contract for Varsity JV Wrestling for Zach Allen, and I would make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Cindy. Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Next, we have a couple of resignations. First is for Mr. Weersbecky.
Good job.
Who is resigning, I'm sorry, who is resigning as a third-grade teacher at Wallingford, so I would make a motion that we accept that resignation.
I'll second that.
Okay, Cindy, thank you. Discussion.
What's, uh, what's going to happen?
We actually have somebody filling in there that started on Monday, so there was no gap, which is great. So the person who's going to fill in for the rest of the year, that is somebody we're going to bring to the board in two weeks. Not a secret, though, Karen Castle, who's been a longtime employee and who has been great about always pitching in and helping where she can. The position was posted publicly as a, as a long-term subposition. We actually had a couple of internal applicants, which was great. We had, we had all the applicants we were aware of, so we knew them in some capacity, so it was great for Phil to have some good choices there. Like I said, we'll bring that to the board at our next board meeting. That was a little bit last minute to get that all in place with the timing, but yeah, good question. We do have a plan in place.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Pose. Thank you. One more. A resignation from Stacy Brock as a.
Custodian.
Custodian, thank you. Sorry. And I would make that a motion, that we accept that resignation.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay. And then our next meeting of the Personnel Committee will be November 1st, and we're going to meet at 6:00. We've been meeting at 6:30, but I want to spend some time on the superintendent evaluation. So we're going to meet November 1st at 6:00. That's all I have.
Thank you. Policy, I don't have any. Thanks.
Me neither.
Oh, were you going to talk about?
Nope, that's our next meeting.
That's for our next meeting, okay.
Yeah, I, I handed out some stuff, those of you who were part of the Policy Committee meeting, we talked about trying to consolidate some policies, so I tried to do that.
That was homework Len did on his own.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which will be discussed at our next policy meeting.
Which is 10.
Next Tuesday.
October 10th at 5:30.
We'll look at it in more detail then.
Buildings and grounds.
We had a meeting.
Your person?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
We had a meeting yesterday, which was like probably one of the most well-attended committee meetings that I've ever been to.
Which is, which is great to hear.
Which is fantastic. We had the, we actually had two community members come for two different things. One was, a community member had found some, had been sent pictures of outlets and maybe some miswiring and stuff in the building, so we talked to Tim about that. We had a former board member come about Shrewsbury and how she was very disappointed in the upkeep of the building over the summer, and how maybe we can try to work on that. And then the main, the bulk of what we were talking about was how to deal with the problem in Tinmouth, that there's not enough space for all the activities that have to occur. And so we had almost all the teachers come to talk about the problems that they're facing with every single day, basically, some days worse when it's banned, and other activities that happen in the gym. If you can imagine, when we go to Tinmouth, we're in the gym, the room that you'd walk into first, right, there's like a little classroom that wasn't really designed to be a classroom.
Small, yeah.
Which is a small classroom, and it is very difficult for any learning to occur if there's activity happening in the gym. There's also the space in the library, which is a smaller, like 12 by 12 room, where it's like four people are working out of it, and also a part-time classroom, and also the library. So through ESR funds, there was a project created to try to build an outdoor classroom space, or not an outdoor, another building in that space through a company called Vermont Mod. And the original ESR fund is for $120, the original quote, and this was probably two years ago when that quote happened. Guess what happens? Surprising no one, it's very expensive now. The actual number, Maureen, it's $250?
Around $250.
Around $250. So that, and so it's, this space would basically be, you put a foundation down, the building comes in two pieces, you put it together. Super high efficiency, you know, the, you know, little mini-split would run it, solves the problem of the space. It looked, you know, when we looked at those, the kid numbers, probably for a while, Tinmouth is going to have between 60 and 70 kids. Tinmouth works really well with about 40 kids.
And if, you know, those numbers, when we pointed out that one class of two students, that doesn't really happen as much anymore at Tinmouth. They've seen far more consistent, you know, five, six, seven kids per grade, where there were years definitely where graduating classes were three or four or one, yeah. So some of that bump I talked about, that we saw pre-COVID, there was more of that at Tinmouth than there were at some of our other schools. So that shift from being a 50-student school to a 65, 70-student school definitely happened, and then has more or less stayed there since that bump, if that makes sense. Is Liz?
Liz, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I put my head up because, so Buildings and Grounds folks, it does sound like this is something that would fall under the umbrella of a congressionally designated spending grant. And I'm trying to keep people in the loop, but I don't think I've done a great job of it, because people are looking for money to do things, and there is money out there. We just have to corral all of our projects into one big ask, and then.
Yeah, the, this fund, the, so the ESR funding, the problem with this is that the ESR funding, if it's not spent by next September, it goes away, so.
Oh, I understand, so this congressional, there is other money.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Right, and so.
And I do think something that's in front of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, too, is we need to start looking at the building fund that we have. You know, last year, we had historically been putting $200,000 in the building fund for use. Last year, budget season, we did the work to bump that up to 250, and our communities absolutely were on board with that and voted to approve that. So we have some funding for use for projects when you start thinking about the $50,000 to $100,000 range, we can do some of those projects, but we need to start sitting down and looking at all those projects and making those decisions. And I think Buildings and Grounds has done some good work to get where they are now, and I think we're in a good position to have those conversations.
And then I think, Bruce, you would agree, like, one of the problems that we're facing is that there's kids and teachers in the school right now dealing with this problem. And so there may be a temporary solution that works there, that, I don't know if you, there's a church that's right next to the school, and the, below the church used to be a community space before the community got a little too big for it. There's some asbestos remediation that has to occur in it, but that is potentially a solution to the problem in the, in like the quick future. I, I don't think, I think we're still waiting on some actual details about that space, though.
Something has to be done. The building's great, whatever you want to do with the building is great, but something's got to be done to alleviate the teachers' problems now. I mean, they dealt with it now for what, six weeks? And we can't.
Three years.
Well, and on top of the years.
We just can't keep going until the building comes, because that may not happen.
And, and I think what Buildings and Grounds needs to do is look at, well, you know, what is needed in all of our schools, and how do we start funding those things?
Yeah, we need a list.
Yeah.
From all.
Well, we have our five-year plan.
We do.
That's got a lot of those big-ticket items on there.
Right.
But I think we, you know, we, we had that five-year plan as a draft going into the summer, and I think, yeah, I think we need to start identifying what are the projects we're going to fund.
And there also is the, there's opportunity cost, right? So it's like, there's funding for this partially now, there probably won't be funding for it later, that makes, you know, the decision slightly different.
Or there, there could be funding that's got a lot of hoops to jump through, and we already jumped through a lot of hoops.
Right.
For funding, you know?
Right. And so I would say for, for this, I, I think because there is some immediacy to it, I think we do have to figure out how as a board, to, to put it back onto the board as making the decision on whether we're going to go for it or not. The question that I have, so Brian, we talked about this a little bit before, but it seems like most ESR money gets locked into a certain thing. Like this building, one of the reasons why we have to stay with this building is because this ESR money is tied to this building.
We, we not only wrote the ESR grant to address the specific of a modular unit, so we were that specific in our ESR grant, we had to do a separate construction approval process through the state of Vermont, so we had another application, and that application also is specific to being a modular unit. We, we can't go back and change those. The timelines on being able to change those are, are gone. So if we're going to use the funding at Tinmouth that way, we can't say, you know what, we changed our mind, let's do a timber frame. We can't, because we crossed those bridges already, and we can't turn back on that. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just making sure that it's like, this is, that's one of the reasons why it's like, even though the quote came back bigger, that's why you can't really change it.
Yeah.
The other, the town did vote for it, so they, the select board approved it, and so the space is available if they want to do it.
Go ahead.
Well, we're, we're not, he's not, that's not usually how we do the meetings, right?
Okay.
I don't know.
I'm just, so how, how do we come up with the extra money that's needed? Is that what the question is?
That's, yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm saying as a board, that's outs, like, Buildings and Committee, we can talk about it, but this is where.
What I would recommend, what I would recommend is that Buildings and Grounds makes a recommendation to the full board for approval of certain projects funded through our building fund. And that's something that, you know, B&amp;G could, Buildings and Grounds could decide, like, do we want to, do we want to figure out what are the four projects we're doing this year? Do we want to start with one and then go from there? You know, I don't have too much of a recommendation on that, but I.
So the money, there, there is money.
Yeah.
In the building fund.
Yeah. And, and we just put $250,000 in for this year. The only thing we're waiting on that is our audit to come back so that that, our audit is going to tell us that the way you did your books is appropriate, so that $250,000 is surplus and you can put it in. So it's been approved, we're just waiting on technicality. There is some funding in the building fund already, because we have been funding it in the past, but that's something that I think Buildings and Grounds needs to make the recommendation to the full board. The full board could entertain it on its own, I think, but I think then we would be, we would be keeping Buildings and Grounds from doing their job.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, because in finance, we're going to be, like, talking about what we're doing, how we are going to, because the other problem with the Buildings and Grounds is that.
We haven't been funding.
We have more projects, like, this is a single project. Like, the other concern that we're having in all the schools is the heat and humidity that exists.
Yeah.
That didn't used to exist in these schools, and so when you have mushrooms growing and Shrewsbury carpeting, there's something wrong.
Yeah.
And so how are we going to address that? Because that also isn't.
And we have those humidity problems in the summer in all of our buildings these days, we do. You know, that's becoming a bigger problem that needs to be addressed. Do you, Josh, you mentioned this, and I know we were going to talk about this a little bit in finance, but I think it's relevant. Josh was hinting at, and I'm putting this up here, a strategy that we talked about in our finance meeting to start funding our building fund in a way that we could accomplish that five-year plan. I, I think I told the board that the five-year plan, if you tallied up all the estimates, we would be short by about half. Wait, maybe not half, almost half. We would, we would put, we would put $1.25 million in our building fund over five years, we need $2 million. So close to short by half, not quite half. This strategy would slowly raise the amount we're putting in our building fund every year, and it would slowly lower how much we're relying on that surplus to pay down taxes. So I think that's, if, if we're really serious about talking about funding our buildings in a way that we are, we're maintaining them for the long term, and we are making them presentable spaces that we can be proud of when people come to our buildings, we got to do something financially to back that up. And that's a board goal, too, to, to fund in a way that we're maintaining our facilities. So this was something we talked about in finance, you know, what, how would we actually do that in a way that's not just a crazy ask for tax dollars? How do we do that in a way that actually gives us a long-term strategy for tax stability? Small increases, but a lot of bang for our buck to the building fund. So that's what Josh was kind of getting at, that. So I think relevant to.
So is there another Building and Grounds meeting scheduled?
There's not now, I think the next one would normally be not until the 7th, I think.
So maybe the next meeting, the list, but involve finance? I know usually, Liz, am I right, they sometimes.
We had done some.
Committee again?
We had done some joint meetings last year.
This may be the next Buildings and Grounds be the to-do list, and then we pull finance, because we really need to look at all schools. We need that list again, that five-year plan list of, and then prioritize.
And even if we don't do a joint meeting, I, I think we're in a place now where I know enough about where we're going with both of those committees, that I can bring some things to B&amp;G that line up with the finances, if that makes sense. And so it can bring some account balances and things like that.
I think the other thing that we need to know as a board, and certainly as the Buildings and Grounds Committee, is like, I know in Tinmouth, there's another project that's like a $350,000, $350,000 ESR grant.
Yeah.
That we have not moved forward on yet.
Yeah.
Do, is that, is there other grant money?
Yeah.
All that is tied to building projects that we're not doing in other schools?
Ah, you know, there, there is ESR funding designated for things like Shrewsbury replacing the carpet.
Right.
I think Wallingford replacing the carpet. So each building had some ideas of how they were going to use funding. Tinmouth's idea was classroom space.
And so the question I'm asking is.
Yeah.
Have those things been done?
Those are.
Or are there other looming deadlines that aren't going to be met?
That's, yeah, why we need the list, I think, and we need to start looking at all that.
And those are, those are really looking at, looking like largely summer work. So this coming summer is really where we're thinking about with that.
Because basically, the other part that I think we keep hearing from Tim at these meetings is, I can't find people to, I can't find the electric, so like, the other thing we talked about, too, like, was the boiler. We have the parts for it, but there's nobody to do the work.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Yeah, and the problem with, everybody probably remembers the insurance problem that we had, you know, the electrician didn't get paid for a long time, so is he going to come back and work for us now?
I don't know.
But so.
He is, which is good.
Yeah.
Which is good, but we're trying to take care of him, yeah.
I don't want to leave here until we somewhat get to the point about the students.
Yeah.
These, these teachers, special ed teachers, librarian, they were adamant, there's no room. Special ed has no confidentiality. There's no place they can go and have confidentiality with their students. And we're talking long-term for this building.
Yeah.
I don't want these, these teachers, who's going to take that on and say, we're going to find space for them like right away?
Maureen, Maureen and Tim and I were working over the summer to try and identify a short-term solution, so we've been working on that, knowing that we, you know, didn't want to just wait a year. You know, Maureen had a good thought for how we could access some of that community space in the church, and, you know, over the summer, we scrambled to try and put some things in place.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the, the fire marshal to get back to us, and then we would know, you know, we'll have all our ducks in rows, so we can.
So, so you're going to ride a point on that.
Oh, Maureen has been.
So I think that maybe, maybe to Bruce's point is, if there, if that space becomes available, do we have to actually do anything as a board? Or can it just start being done?
Ah, you know, maybe sign the lease, I'd have to check on that. I think beyond that, no, there's really not board involvement. For the, for the construction project?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Because we're talking about, you know, something that Maureen has funding for, and she controls that budget, so we can make those decisions and do that work. But this construction project is something that, that, it's the building fund, and, and we've always looked at that as being Buildings and Grounds doing that work so that we make sure that more people are involved, the public has an opportunity to comment, you know. Otherwise, you'd be talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars that, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for me to go, well, let's do this at Wallingford, well, what about Clarendon? You know, and I just make that call by myself. I think it, that fund is different than the other funds that we have set up, if that makes sense.
So can, can we make a motion that gives you permission?
We don't need one.
Gives me?
To sign the lease, like just.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, 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 yeah, I mean, if, if you're, if you want to, I, I don't even know that, I don't even know that there has to be board action, but if you wanted to do that just in case, yeah, that's, that's reasonable. I thought you were going to say.
No.
Grant. Be the authority to spend all that money, and that's not.
No, I mean, if, if Maureen gets the lease, and.
If we don't need one, why don't we wait for the fire marshal to come back and have an update of that? Because we don't, if we don't have to do any action.
Because basically, it's, there's asbestos in the flooring.
Yeah.
And so it depends on how can, how is it super easy?
Stan, is Stan still hanging out? Maybe Stan, Stan might chime in and tell us if we need board action to sign the lease? That's one I just don't know, off the top of my.
I don't know either, I mean.
Yeah. But I know we've done.
I just want the teachers to know that we are supporting them in finding the space they need to teach their students.
Do we need board action?
Do we need board action to sign the lease, Stan?
Of that size?
Uh, it depends, I guess, I mean-
Wouldn't hurt.
It wouldn't hurt, and also there's the unknown of the asbestos and how much that's gonna cost.
Yeah. Yeah, so if we-
I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be some give and take as to what the church is willing to cover, to get, to get it up to code.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whether or not they would go into an abatement, uh, cost that I would doubt it, because is it going, you know, depending if we're gonna be doing long-term, it may just be, we may be looking at a short-term solution, so, there's a lot of factors involved in that, as to whether or not.
And they, the, the, the representative from the church is very, very much wants the space to work. Like, they are on board, you know, he is, he works construction, he doesn't do asbestos abatement, you know? So it's like, I, I imagine most of the stuff, besides that, they can find it in-house, so it shouldn't be that expensive for that part.
We just don't have a hard record until they know what the expenses are.
Do we wanna do a motion for-
I think we should, just, just 'cause it's, just 'cause.
So-
So I'll make a motion.
Yeah, there you go.
Then, then we give Brian permission-
authorize me to sign the lease on behalf of-
To sign the lease on behalf of the board for usage of the church property in Tinmouth. How's that?
That's pretty good on the slide. You're pretty good.
Sounds good, I second it.
Um, all in favor? All right. Congratulations, Brian.
And we'll, uh, thank you, and we'll definitely be working, uh, I wonder, Josh, if maybe there'll be an email to set a future meeting, 'cause I do think-
I-
I will get with Matt and find out when future meeting will be.
Okay.
And I will have him send it out.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, community engagement, 'cause it is getting really hot in here.
We have, have not met since the last board meeting, right? So we had an update.
Correct.
Is there a future date?
Our next one's supposed to be the 18th.
Yep.
Since most everyone is here, I would recommend that our next one be at Shrewsbury, rather than have it here and then try and run up the hill.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Does anyone object to that?
Absolutely not, that's great.
All right.
So our next one will be the 18th in Shrewsbury.
At what time? 6?
6:30.
6:30, okay.
18, Shrewsbury.
Perfect.
Great.
Negotiations?
Uh, negotiations-
Have we started without yet?
We have officially, uh, let the association know that we're, we intend to bargain this year. The association has officially responded, that they accept that and are getting ready on themselves. They're ready to start setting days and times. Informally, I think they're final, they're finalizing their team, and on our end, informally, we still have to decide what works. I was hopeful that the negotiating, negotiation committee tonight could identify a day and a time that would work. I'd sent an email to those folks, kinda prepping, like, hey, start thinking. Negotiations can get to the point where we're meeting every other week, so having a day and a time that can be a regular one, I think, is important.
Do we have a chair of that committee yet?
Well, the problem is it's in Matt's-
Matt's chair.
I will find out from Matt, then.
Okay.
Because I think it's the, he is the most important-
Yeah.
Person, and then can rotate around that space, right?
All right. If folks are comfortable, we can do a follow-up email to identify daytime, and then I wonder, would folks be comfortable launching into that maybe the last week of October? Is that a reasonable tentative time to start?
And do you, is that a meeting that would be us, or as a whole, at, with both everybody?
That would be with everybody. We would do a pre-meeting.
Yeah.
We would meet and do our work, and then we would have everybody there.
Yeah.
I will find out. And I will just talk tomorrow.
Okay.
Is that, so you're saying that, that you're thinking the 23rd through 27th, that was the full last full week?
Earlier in the week would be helpful for me.
Okay.
That's all I'm-
All right, I will let him know.
Incredibly tentative, because the union could say, oh, we got our team together, are you ready next week?
Yeah.
Or they could say, oh, we still need a little more time. I just wonder, if, if I know end of October is comfortable, I can have a conversation with the association. Okay.
I think it's comfortable if we have a chance to meet prior to that, just-
Yeah. Yeah.
The last minute questions.
Yeah.
Right, and to go over those, that, that list of the stuff that we wanted to talk about.
Absolutely.
All right, I will touch base with him tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will get emails out, or have him email for me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, Liz, finance.
Thank you, everyone, we have the following pay orders for approval from the general fund. We have a pay order in the amount of 297,915.40. Labeled officials, we have a pay order in the amount of 4,075 dollars. From the general fund, we have a pay order in the amount of 13,981.56. From our upper school program, we have a pay order in the amount of 864.56. From our, our lunch program, we have a pay order in the amount of 2,428.8 for a grand total of 319,264.60. From our student activities accounts, from the river, we have a pay order in the amount of 1,600 dollars. For payroll this evening, we have regular payroll in the amount of 598,978.8. And also, we're gonna payroll, I'm sorry, yes, payroll, we have a warrant in the amount of 842.40 for a grand total of 598,939.12. And I move that we accept and approve this payroll and these pay orders as presented.
I'll second that.
Is that Nick?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Nick. Any discussion? I'm not seeing any, but you're all kinda small, so, you know, we'll wait, you know?
No, we're good.
You're good.
All right, any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those getting rid of approving payroll and pay orders as presented?
You're good.
Unanimous in the room.
Thank you very much. The next meeting of the finance committee is Thursday, October 19th, at 5:00 P.M.
I thought you had one tomorrow.
Oh, that was, we were gonna have one tomorrow, but then we had some challenges and had to reschedule.
Okay.
Well, there are teacher conferences.
That was a tentative date we thought about, but, yeah.
All right. We'll deal with that later. Thank you, everybody, um, and-
Did we do, did we do future meetings, Liz?
We were gonna maybe talk about it in this meeting to talk about a future date.
So something we had talked about was holding those budget forums like we did last year. The finance committee thought that two still made sense, that's what we did last year, and staggering when those would be, having slightly different times, uh, we were talking about October 19th being the next meeting, and that October 19th, we would meet public session four to five, and then our finance meeting five to six, on the 19th, if that made sense. And that public session four to five might be something board members wanted to attend. That finance meeting might be something board members want to attend, too. I think those start to become pretty important committee meetings, and, and whether you're on the committee or not, you can absolutely attend. So if that seemed reasonable, October 19th, public session four to five, finance meeting five to six, then we would try to do a public session right before our board meeting, so later in the evening to try and accommodate more people. November 15th, six to seven, having our, uh, public session, and then the following day, Thursday, the 16th, we do our finance meeting four to five. Uh, we were, we definitely wanted to highlight the November 15th day, um, if that gets in the way of personnel or community engagement, if you were thinking about doing a meeting. Uh, November 1 is personnel, right?
Right.
So, community engagement, were you thinking about doing a meeting on the, on the-
15th.
15th?
That's been, what we've been talking about, but-
Yeah. Would you, would you be willing to shift that to accommodate the public forums? Is that, okay. That was, I think, our big question, Liz, is that right?
On the 15th?
Yeah, and I had sent it to members of the finance committee, just saying, you know, let me know if this is at all problematic, and I announced that I would be sharing this with the full board.
'Cause we wanna make sure we have the quorum, but then we did wanna make sure the rest of the board felt, uh, that they were welcome at the public sessions or the committee meetings. Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Brian, one more thing.
Yeah.
We did discuss you sharing the information that you would have shared at the finance committee meeting on September 27th, that you did not have quorum.
Yeah.
And you did a little bit of a sneak preview, um, under Buildings and Grounds.
Yeah, Liz, Liz is referring to this, and I do wonder if folks have any questions. I'll, I'll go through this fairly quickly. This is something I think the full board had when we, when we put it in our finance packet. I told Liz I was gonna put it in this week's packet, too, and I totally forgot, so I'm sorry that she didn't get a reminder of it, uh, but she should've gotten it for the finance New, the pupil weighting that Josh was talking about earlier when we were looking at class numbers, that pupil weighting does put us in a somewhat favorable position. Reminder that ballot language this year will not show increase or decrease, it'll just show our per pupil cost. That's because the weighting is changing. They don't want us, uh, thank you, Liz, for letting us know. They don't want budgets to be held up because the state changed the funding model. Because the state could change the funding model, and all of a sudden, your budget has a huge increase because they changed the funding model. Or your budget could have a decrease because they changed the funding model. So it's not, not because of anything we've done, so the state has said for the next several years that the ballot language is gonna be simplified. So just a reminder there. Wouldn't impact us too much, 'cause we're in a favorable position. Uh, we're starting to do that work we did last year of meeting with principals, department heads, to get budget proposals. Folks are also working on that 50,000 that was added to the budget last year for teacher supply fund, to divvy that up and use that appropriately, uh, and we're trying to come up with some long-term plans for that. How can we use that more effectively, efficiently, like we've talked about a little bit? So we haven't lost that thread. Now, here's what I was hinting at during Buildings and Grounds, thinking about a five-year plan where we could back up from this, you know, rather large reliance that we have on surplus funding to pay taxes down. This past budget year, we used $700,000 to keep our district tax rate down, seven cents per hundred dollars of property value. So, lot of dollars, and, you know, seven cents per hundred dollars of property value is, is something coming out of people's wallets. It is. Uh, but $700,000 is a lot of funding that we are using just to pay taxes down. If we get to years where we don't have that surplus, we're in trouble, 'cause now taxes are gonna jump, seven cents per hundred dollars of home value, and, and that was our fault, because we were relying on surplus, and then the surplus disappeared. Coming out of COVID, we've had a lot of surplus funds, and we are highly unlikely to see the same surplus funds coming our way. So we've been having some conversations around, how do we start lowering the amount of surplus we're using, so that we walk away from that potential cliff, but we do it in a way that minimizes the impact to taxpayers? So, next year, proposal would be, well, let's use 600,000 to pay down taxes. Then let's use 400,000. Then let's use 200,000, so that we're slowly walking away from having to use so much surplus. That does mean that we're looking at us, at small increases year to year to get out of that surplus hole. But I think far better than we just run out of surplus and taxes swing seven cents. We're talking about, how do we strategically have taxes go up two cents per hundred dollars of property value? So that we get to the point where we're not relying on that surplus so much? The nice trade-off of that is, if we start easing up on how much surplus we're using to pay down taxes, we can start putting a little bit more in our building fund. It's not a complete trade-off. We're not gonna go from 700,000 to pay taxes down, but now we're putting 700,000 in the building fund. But we can, we can put more in our building fund because of that, and I think that's, tax stability, I would think, would be a good thing for our communities. Putting the funding in our building funds to actually care for our buildings the way we've said we want to, I think, is a, is a good thing, too. So, this is our proposal to be chewing on before the next finance meeting and before we bring a budget to the board. Does this make sense?
It, it does, as long as the 700,000 is a static number.
Uh, what do you mean, Paul?
That your surplus of 700,000, you're assuming that all over time.
Well, so Stan and I, Stan and I talked a little bit, and we're projecting that we're only gonna have a 350,000 surplus year to year. 700,000 is crazy, and we probably will never see that again.
Okay.
So what we're doing, Paul, is at the top corner left, that one and a half million, uh, which is what we have. We have that much in unanticipated surplus, which is crazy. Which means we could get through about three years of using surplus the same way, then we'd hit a cliff.
Yeah.
So how do we slowly, if we're adding less in surplus, how do we slowly start dropping the amount of surplus we're using to where it equals out? Where maybe we're using, you know, we get to the point where we don't have any surplus, but we don't need any surplus. That's-
Yeah, I get the theory there.
That's the theory.
I was misreading that in terms of-
And that was probably-
What the 350 meant, yeah.
Lack of clarity on my end, probably, Paul.
I think the other question of it, too, and partially what we want out of the community engagement, is-
Yeah.
The diminishing returns of-
Yeah.
If you spend $100,000 to lower taxes, could you spend that $100,000 on something in our facility-
Well-
That inherently lowered, like, you know, instead of having to bond something out in the future-
And we're talking about a Tinmouth project where we're talking about $200,000.
Right. Which in, which is 150 of money that we would have to spend.
That's a shift we could make, or we could keep paying taxes down. You know, it's not a shift we have to make, but if we want to fund that five-year plan, we gotta figure out some way to do it. And I think figuring out a way to do it that minimizes, I'm not gonna say tax increase, but minimizes instability, so that from year to year, if there's an increase, it's a small increase. Year to year, if there's a decrease, it's a small decrease, so people know what to expect. I, I, we've gotten into a position where I'm a little, I'm a little nervous about if we keep doing what we're doing, we're gonna have a year where people get really upset, 'cause taxes swing, and we don't have anything to show for it, 'cause we didn't actually do anything good with any money we had that we could've saved.
Just moving forward, I think that's a huge-
Yeah.
Educational piece that we need to provide to taxpayers.
Oh, yeah.
So that they understand that, what we're doing, because the, the reality is, you're, you're trading off-
Yeah.
Taxes-
Yep.
For infrastructure.
Yes.
Okay.
We're specifically making that trade-off. We're not saying your taxes are going up and, you know, we're, we're doing 3,000 more here, we're doing 2,000 more here.
Yeah, we're changing the carpet.
We're doing, we're doing a bunch of different things everywhere and it's hard to really see that.
Yeah.
It's a very clear trade-off of, it's going in the building fund.
Yeah, and, and-
And buildings and grounds oversees that building fund, not me.
Yeah.
So I think there's great opportunity for public input in how those funds get used.
Well, and I, I think-
That's a good point, Larry.
As, you know, I think buildings and grounds in the past and the operations manner, I think there could have been some better work done-
Yep.
To not necessarily be in the place we're in right now.
Yeah.
But we're not in a bad place, but it's just like of having an actual plan of the things that need to be done.
And there were some good, big projects that were done around energy efficiency that are going to pay dividends in the future and already are. We're ready for a different kind of work. And that's where I think there's a reason we're having this conversation now, not in December. I think because we need to be having the conversation and engaging the public in this. And to have that public forum, you know, last year our budget forums were a lot, were pretty much saying, you know, what can you tell us? We didn't have a lot to put in front of them to get their feedback on. I think this is a great thing to get public feedback on. And then tell us anything else you want to tell us. But I think we're starting, we're starting this process with more, so we can get better feedback and we can do better work, so.
I, it's, I, I just think it's critically important. That's all.
Oh, yeah. So, just a, just a preview of where we're trying to go with finance. Liz, did that capture that reasonably?
I have to step away from most of that.
Okay.
I'm sure you did a beautiful job.
Fair, fair enough. We'll, we'll be revisiting it for sure, so.
All right, let's move on. Legal, do we have any other legal business?
None that I'm aware of.
The only thing that, just looking at my calendar as we were doing all that, is, so next week is the new teachers meet and greet?
Yeah, all good reminder.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's on Thursday?
Thursday at 3:45.
That's great for other legal business. Thank you, Josh.
It was a huge success last year.
Yeah.
So hopefully this year.
Time well spent.
I have it as three to four. Is that right? Or is that?
Library.
Yeah, library. It will not end at four. I think we were here about last year, like six. I was here for a while.
Thursday?
Yes.
What's the date of that?
12.
12.
I've got 3:45.
I did too.
Yeah, it might just be, it might just fill me.
Yep.
That's why I was double checking.
New, new teachers are in for a little bit to do some meeting time first, so 3:45, I think, is, is appropriate.
Okay, agenda building for next meeting.
We've got Shrewsbury presentation.
Yep.
I can bring some choice tuition numbers. The other thing we had on the agenda, the only other thing scheduled, would be progress on goals or board education. So we can either pick a topic for board education, spend some time looking at some resources, have some discussions, or we can check in on our board goals and talk about, you know, hey, community engagement's been doing some work. What are the other board goals we need to be looking at? Are we forgetting about them or are we keeping working on them? Does anybody have a strong-
I think we need to do that.
Look at the goals again?
Yep.
Especially, I think, with the budget coming up.
Yeah, 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 yep.
That needs to be front and face.
And what we tried to do was build that in kind of quarterly, that we'd be looking back at those to make sure that we're still working. Those are the three things I have.
We'll have those two personnel.
Oh, yeah, I will have some contracts that I'll bring, even though we don't have a personnel meeting.
Yep, so we'll have to do that.
Brian, I'm going to have a transfer. I need the board to approve.
Okay. Student transfer?
Update on terms.
Just money from-
Yes.
Oh, 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 got it. Financial transfer.
Financial transfer.
Tinmouth School.
Okay.
Update.
Great. Got it.
And, I think that's it, Brett?
Okay. And we will be at Shrewsbury. Community engagement will be there before us.
Yes.
Okay.
And there will not be snow on the ground, Bruce.
We will, we will see about that.
Do we need an executive session?
None that I'm aware of, but I guess I should have said during other legal business, we love having folks here. So great to see public here. We, we welcome you in the future too, and I think we'll be having some really great places where we'll need that public input, so.
We may have to move rooms.
Yep.
Good, good, all right. 8:33, we are adjourned. See y'all next time.